Folks, let's come back to order here for our second and last docketed item today. And as always, I'll call on Ms. Fox if she would read that next docket, please.
Docket PZ 17023, application has been filed by Oldham Plaza LLC for approval of a revised plan on approximately .90 acres. The property is located at 404 South First Avenue, La Grange. The property is Zone C3, General Business District.
Alrighty, thank you. And as always, Ms. Alvey, I will call on you to introduce the docket, please.
Sure. Again, Amy Alvey with Oldham County Planning and Development Services. Ms. Fox stated this is a revised development plan for Oldham Plaza. This is for the Outlet Number Two. The property, the Outlet is approximately .9 acres, and it is Zone C3, General Business District. This is an aerial view of the property. It's, you'll see outlined here in yellow, that is the location of Outlet Two. Outlined in blue is the AutoZone lot, which is considered Outlet One. It is its own standalone lot. It is not actually part of the overall Oldham Plaza. But Outlet Number Two, at this time, will remain as part of the entire plaza for the, for that. So they're not, right now, proposing a minor plat to carve that off. On June 25th, 2013, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a revised development plan that included two Outlets with frontage along Highway 53, realignment of parking, entrance changes along Jaeger Avenue and Parker Drive, and a waiver for interior landscape areas. This is the view along Highway 53 going north. This is just the Outlet. This gives you an ideal of AutoZone there. This is, again, a north view looking into the lot. And this is, what you think is the next slide? If you, this is the west view looking in from Highway 53. You can see the existing retail center behind it. This is the northern property line. On the plan, you'll see an existing interior landscape area that has parking, that kind of divides the two lots. That is this area here. This is the parking for AutoZone. And as part of their plan, when it was approved and went to construction, we had them go ahead and construct this curb, as well as this parking area here, just to kind of tie the sites together. This is the west view, again, into the remaining complex, which you'll see that is the southeast Oldham County Campus location. And again, this just shows the existing plant fitness. And I was trying to, I couldn't figure out why these are so hazy. I think this was the day when the heat index was like 105. So that's the only thing I can think of, is why it seems so hazy. It was a clear day, but... This is the east view looking into the lot. Again, this is AutoZone. Highway 53 runs along here with Valley Rest Cemetery and PNC Bank. This is just another view, east view into the property. This is looking south. This is existing Champion Chevrolet. This is the existing ingress and egress point there on Parker Drive. This is a view from the south adjoining, so this is a view from Champion's parking lot looking back into the site. This is the, the old, I'll call it, the old entrance that will eventually be closed, and will, this will become the primary entrance on there. And this is just another view looking into the property from the south adjoining. A condition of approval from the 2013 plan required any changes to the approved development plan must come back before the Planning Commission for review and approval. The applicant is requesting approval of a revised development plan to increase the size of the building on Outlet Number Two from 3,800 square feet to 5,000 square feet. The building was originally shown to be used all as restaurant space, but the revised plan outlines 2,000 square feet for restaurant and 3,000 square feet for retail or medical. The plan also outlines provisions for a drive-through with a bypass lane. And the proposed plan complies with all of the other zoning requirements. This was the 2013 approved plan. You'll see highlighted there in yellow, that is Outlet Two, and shows the existing 3,000-plus-square-foot proposed restaurant. This is just a zoomed-in version of that 2013 plan. This is the 2017 plan. You'll see the, the building has kind of orientated a little bit different, and then they have a drive-through here with a bypass lane. So in summary, the applicant is requesting approval of a revised development plan for Outlet Number Two for 404 South First Street, La Grange. And that is all that I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Alrighty. Mr. Harris, anything you need to add to this?
Thank you. I just want to point out that there is proposed construction within the joint access agreement that shows on this lot. And I want to point that out, and that, from an engineering standpoint and a stormwater standpoint, this is part of a larger development, whether it's been pulled out of that development or not, according to our codes.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Alright, Commissioners, questions for the staff? Yes, Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Ms. Alvey. I'll ask the applicant more about this later, but in the proposal, it mentions retail slash restaurant slash medical, et cetera. If they chose, if the applicant chose to change that, like the drive-through and make it all whatever, they would have to come back? If they decided to take that driveline out, not use restaurant, or, and they took that out, would they have to come back here for a new revised plan?
If they were going to change the layout, I would say yes, of how this is going to work. If, for some reason, that they don't need the drive-through, I don't think that's a significant change that would require Planning Commission approval, because that's just basically drawn on here as a bypass lane to show that there's adequate room for the drive-through, or for the bypass lane and striping. If, for some reason, whatever restaurant went in there that didn't want a drive-through, then I think it, the plan would, and they kept it in the same footprint, I don't think that would require them to come back to the Planning Commission. It's less.
It's good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Alright. Any additional questions for staff? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Douglas.
I'm going to go back to the parking issue again. If I'm looking at the original development on 2013, the total parking required was said 623, the minimum and maximum was 805.
Okay.
It says parking provided 377 spaces, vehicular use areas 2,000, or 207,000. But anyway, I'm rattling this off.
Mm-hmm.
So on the new plan, it's saying that for the 5,000-square-foot, the minimum required spaces is 37. So I'm trying to draw a conclusion on, was the 2013 including the total development, or just that those two proposed, retail and proposed restaurant areas?
The 2013 plan was for the entire site.
Okay. That's my, I guess, we don't see it on their comparison for the new site development plan, is what is the new required parking space for the total square footage for the site now? They don't have it on their site development plan. They're only providing us the minimum spaces for this 5,000-square-foot, not for the total, because it appears to me we're going to lose a lot more spaces.
Ah, if you, I can answer that question, because I think I have it in my notes, because I counted the number of parking spaces that were in the 2013 plan for the Outlet Number Two versus the 2017 Outlet Number Two. And they, I want to say that they actually, I don't want to say.
I'll say what?
Let me look through my notes and give you that information.
Let the applicant maybe address that. We'll let the applicant address that question.
Well, I mean, I mean, it seems like we're squeezing a lot. I know it's already an Outlet, but we're squeezing a lot. In 2013, they didn't have a space that was in that development that's taking up much of the spaces now. So I'm concerned about...
The footprint of the building, you're saying, because the footprint of the building is larger?
Well, the footprint of this new building with the existing now development that's gone on in that complex. I mean, it's, it's obvious that the parking has changed in that parking lot.
Well, and let me clarify, parking is based on the use.
Right.
And the requirements for each use, but also there's a cross-access parking agreement between all the tenants and the shopping center, and they don't, they aren't all there at the same time. So some of the parking spaces can be counted. In other words, the church isn't up, you know, there's nobody there now, other than employees. So you can park anywhere in that parking field for any of the other uses.
So you're saying that on Sunday morning, or Saturdays, or whatever, that restaurant, the retail spot won't be open?
Well, not all of the, not all of the uses are necessarily open.
It just seems like a lot of, I mean, if you go there on Saturdays and Sundays, there's no parking. There are parking on the street, there are parking all over the place. So there's not enough parking for that development now.
At that peak time, yes.
Yeah. And we're going to add more during those time periods. So I know those are questions for the applicant, but I wonder how the staff calculated the minimum spaces for this justification.
Right. And again, I think it's the applicant hopefully can explain that based on the leases they have, and the required parking that the leaseholders have of them, and how they deal with those parking, peak parking times.
So are we saying that we don't have regulations about, in a development, how many required parking spaces that are necessary to meet the standards?
We do, and Amy's looking up her answer to the question.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Anything else? Mr. Hampton?
Does traffic concerns fall under our purview on this particular? I'm trying to find my way here.
Well, yes, but this particular revised, the development plan for Outlet Two doesn't trip the required traffic studies? And that's all we're really dealing with today, is this revised development plan for Lot Two. It, it met all the requirements back in 2013 when we, when we approved. So you're really only considering Lot, Outlet Two. Now you're interjecting, okay, now there's a user in there that has peak hour, a lot of peak hour trips, but that's not the subject today. The subject is this particular Outlet.
Okay.
You're asking a good question.
I think everybody would agree that that particular area, and that section of 53 is pretty complicated at times.
It, yes, it is. And you're asking a good question.
Whether you're turning, if you're headed north trying to turn left, if you're coming out of there trying to turn left, it seems to me like this is only going to make it worse.
Well, we do have a, the state recently awarded a CMAC grant, congestion mitigation air quality grant, that includes the South Bone Off-Ramp I-71, and it comes all the way up to Crystal Drive, actually come up to Parker Drive. We're talking about access management, and that will change some of the traffic patterns and the way people move around this. I, I'm pretty sure that the church has a police officer directing traffic at their peak times to make sure that everybody has safe access negress. And when, when the state does, redoes 53, they're, they're currently paving it, but that's not the project. There's a bigger project that is, has to go back through redesign for access management on 53.
Thank you.
There's the potential in that for a traffic signal there, the potential. I'm not sure if it's going to actually be warranted or not.
Okay. Alright. Any additional questions? Ms. Smith?
Um, Amy, nine tenths of an acre would require, would provide, how many parking spaces?
Parking space is not based off the size, it's based off the use of the building, square footage of the building.
Well, but we're taking nine tenths of an acre away that provides parking now. That's where I, for Mr. Douglas, I thought maybe that would make it more clear, because those spaces are lost.
Correct, but that's, that's, that's not the applicant's original plan, just because a building's not there. You know, their plan in 2013 showed a building there, not all parking.
Yes, I just...
So, so I'm not sure. If you give me a minute to let me look at the numbers there, and, give me just a few minutes.
Yeah, they, they are actually increasing, the original proposed approved development plan had 3,800 square feet, so they're just going up by a matter of 1,200 square feet. That's, that's really kind of the, you've already approved a development plan, they could go build the original development plan. They're, they're now, their user wants something a little different.
Anything else, Ms. Smith? Any additional questions for staff?
Well, Mr. Urban said.
Alright.
I understand, and I, and I understand what Ms. Alvey's doing, and I'm just concerned that, originally in 2013, the developmental plan was approved by the Planning Commission, I assume.
Mm-hmm.
I wasn't there. And it was based on the total number of square foot, based on the number of buildings that were there with these proposed two-out-laying lots. But in, in retrospect, I don't think it was, the hindsight was different then with the type of existing now, the existing occupants of those buildings. I mean, things have changed since 2013.
Sure.
So that's the reason why I brought up the question of the parking, because are we going to make it inhabit it because of the overcrowding? And are we creating traffic issues, just like Mr. Hampton said, down the road? Are we, are we looking at that? And that's why I asked staff, was there anything in their regulations that says on these parking standards?
Yeah.
Well, and I think we just need to be aware, too, that, you know, as Mr. Urban pointed out, we, we've got a 3,800-square-foot building that was, it's already been opposed. They can go out there right now and build, you know, build that. And, you know, we're, by adding 1,200 square feet to the building, yeah, they're going to lose a few spots, but, you know, it's still, they can still build basically what they, that, you know, that 3,800-square-foot building with the parking that was attached to that, we approved that in 2013. So they can, you know, they can build that now. So the only thing that they're asking today is to increase the building size to 5,000 square feet, and then add a few more parking spots to accommodate that additional, additional size, so.
So, and, and these are good questions, but I think the applicant now is hearing us to have this discussion. I think we should move on with the applicant's testimony. Hopefully, we'll hear information. That'll give Amy time to get her numbers together, and then when we come back for discussion, we can hear from Amy on the, on the number of spaces, and you'll have the applicant's testimony as well.
Okay. Alright. Is there anything else for staff before we move into the, the applicant's testimony? Okay. We will now move into presentation by the applicant or representative and others in support of the application.
The only, did, we heard from Scott and Cory, Cory is here, I forgot, there's a city...
Oh. Cory, do you have anything that you want to add as far as the city's concerned?
No.
Okay.
Or Ted Chisom's with La Grange Utilities.
Ted, anything that you need to add? Okay. Alright. With that, we'll move into the presentation by the applicant. I don't, not sure who wants to, who's going to start, but... Alrighty. Are you an attorney?
Uh, no. We have an attorney.
Oh, okay. Okay. Alright. So who's going to be making the presentation to the commission?
I would...
We need to get you up, and then we'll get everybody sworn in, and...
Introduce your team.
Okay. Patrick Schmidt, Tilford-Dobbinson Schmidt, 401 West Main Street, 1400 Louisville, Kentucky, on behalf of Todd Clark and Oldham Plaza, Outlet Two.
Okay. And we'll get, get you sworn in. Well, let's get everybody, the other three sworn in, if they're going to testify. Ms. Fox?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Alright, sir, and then we'll get your name and address for the record.
Jay Nixon with Prism Engineering, 2309 Waterson Trail, Louisville, Kentucky, 40299.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Well, we'll jump right to the parking, since that seems to be, this is the original plan that was approved back in 2013. There's 37 spaces that they had in this area proposed for the restaurant. What we've done is still supplied those 37 spaces in the same area. The required spaces are only 31 for the restaurant that was approved in 2013 and for our use. With the use of the medical retail, that reduces the amount of parking required. So when we raised the building footprint up by 1,200 feet, the parking required is negligible, it's the same. And with that area, the parking is required in 2013, plus what we're supplying now is, is even, so maybe that helps to answer some of y'alls' questions, but that building footprint was going to go up either, and it, and it just hasn't been, been placed yet. One of the things that we get to accomplish, and this plan here shows it, is that we're increasing the green space out there than what's currently there, and that's going to help with stormwater and water quality and the general view of the site. One of the other things that this is also going to accomplish is, there is currently a curb cut very close to Highway 53, and we're going to remove that, move that back to where the existing curb cut has already, or been started for the AutoZone project.
Could you draw that on the screen, sir?
Yes. Currently, there is a curb cut right in through here. That's going to be removed, and all access will come through, there's green space out there along this line, but this green space will be put in, and access will come back in through this point to make a little bit safer traffic area. And that's all I have.
Okay. Smith, is there anything that, anything else with your application that you'd like to present?
Well, let's get you back, come back up and so I can get it on the record, please. We'll just answer any questions that the commission might have.
Okay. Alright, so that completes your application then, sir?
Yes.
At this point? Okay. I'm sorry?
I've got questions, too.
Yep, okay. Alright. Let's, before we get into the questions, is there anyone that would like to either have questions or speak in support of this application? Yes, ma'am? And we'll get, get your name and address, and get you sworn in.
Susan Fuller, and I work for the City of La Grange. I'm the Transportation Supervisor. I'm not for or against it, I'm just have a question.
Let me get you sworn in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Because I am the Transportation Supervisor, we have a bus service, and there's a bus stop there that, through Tark. Is that stop going to stay there? That there's a bus, little pavilion?
I can answer that. We've been working with Tark to try to find an alternative location when this property gets developed. The, the question of whether the bus stop stays there is different than where will the cars park when they park to go take the bus, express bus into Louisville. We've looked down on Commerce Parkway, there's a potential other site for the park and ride, and the property owners are in general agreement. If, I just did talk to Mr...
How far on Commerce?
Well, we can have this discussion later.
Okay.
It's just down the street. And again, I can't, I don't want to say in public where it is, because...
Okay. I understand.
That's private conversation that we're having.
Okay.
But I did talk to Mr. Clark before the hearing started, and he's trying to accommodate still availability for parking in, in this particular...
I'm not so worried about the parking as I am about being able to get people who live in La Grange that we take to that Tark stop every day. We, we take people there and we pick them up there.
Right. Yeah, and, and, and Tark has very specific routes. They always obviously want to stop...
Yes, it is.
...so that the pickup is on the same side as the bus stop.
Right.
And I've had preliminary conversations, because the one down at the end of Commerce Parkway at 393 is also going to change. So we're kind of looking at the routing of, of the buses and whatnot. So I'm a huge advocate, you know, I've been for a long time proposing and supporting the, the bus route in La Grange, and trying to expand and work with Tark, and, and, and I've been concerned about this ever since we saw the original development plan in 2013. So I'll, I'll talk with you and Nancy afterwards.
Okay. That'll be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, is there anyone here now that, well, anybody else to speak in support of or have questions? Okay. Is there anyone here that has testimony and questions opposing the application? Anyone here that's opposed to the application? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move into questioning of the applicant by the commission. Commissioners, any questions?
Back to the parking situation, right now, all the parking in that lot or this building does not exist, is basically open parking, is that correct? Somebody need to, do they need to answer to the microphone?
Yes. Somebody needs to come up to the microphone and answer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, currently, people are free to park there if they so choose.
So will this parking around this restaurant be restricted for restaurant parking?
I believe there's an open agreement with shared parking.
Need to get your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Todd Clark with Oldham Plaza LLC, 1115 South Fourth Street, Louisville, Kentucky, 40203. Currently, what's mainly on that front lot is the park and ride. So the cars during the week that are there are not patrons necessarily at the shopping center, they are there to park and get on the Tark bus and go to Louisville.
Okay.
So, once the building is built, it will have a cross-parking agreement with the rest of the, the parking there. So theoretically, you could park at AutoZone and walk over and, and use this, or park here and walk over to AutoZone. People on Sunday mornings will be parking in this lot for the church.
Okay. If the lot is filled on Sunday morning, Saturday afternoon, or whatever for church, and people want to come in and park for the restaurant, there'll be a problem?
Well, they, it would, I mean, those hours and, and that availability will have to be worked out, yes, but the proposed user for two-thirds of the building is, is, will not be open on Sunday mornings or Saturday evenings.
You're saying the medical facility?
The medical facility, that's occupying 3,000 of the 5,000 square feet.
Okay. Okay. Alright. So basically, it will still will remain as open parking for the majority of the time?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. Yes, Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The dumpster is, said it's a screened dumpster. How will that be screened?
I think we're planning on using a six-foot, probably wood fence, decorative fence.
Did I hear you say a six-foot, probably a six-foot wood fence?
Yes.
Okay. The other question is regarding the movement of traffic. Will you, will you have, and I know this will be talked about later, arrows indicating ingress and egress and so forth, and, and/or possible signs pulling in? And I know you'll...
Yeah, we, we have some on the plan, right in here, oop, I just covered them up, but we've got some more right here, too, and right in through here.
Okay, so the ones on, on the plan we have here are pretty much what you will be putting in, the big black arrows. You'll pretty much be putting that actually on the black top or whatever it'd be, direction arrows.
More than likely. That, that engineering hasn't been worked out yet, but more than likely, yes, it'll be...
Okay. Okay, and then as will any signs, if, if, or if not you use them. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, and I've got a question here real quick while you're here on the, as far as the drive-through lane. That, will that be curbed? Is it, will that, will there be a curb between the bypass lane and the, and the actual lane or not?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what was going to be my question, because if it was going to be curbed, it would be awful hard to make that turn, I think, to get, you know, like to get into that, into the lane.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, any additional questions, commissioners? Oh, okay. Who did I see down here? Did I see, oh, Deena, Ms. Crosby?
I have one question. The building you're talking about putting there is a, either a medical building or both medical and restaurant. Am I correct?
Yes, and I've got some elevations of what's being proposed. Possibly a coffee shop and, or Vision Works on the other side. Here's another view of it from north and west. There's a good view. See what that.
That is what you're saying would be the restaurant type with the coffee shop, or is this an additional?
We don't have a tenant in there, or a proposed tenant yet. I don't think they've worked that out, but it would look something very similar to this.
The restaurant would.
The building.
The building, except, the total building. For the medical part of that, since it appears it's going to be two different operations there, would that be more like a doctor's office building, or like an urgent care? Or what would it look like? What would it be?
Well.
Who are you trying to bring in?
Well, you've got to remember that they may be in negotiations and can't actually answer that, but general food group.
Generally, we don't want to put that information out there, but someone has put a name on the building as you see it, so that might have left the cat out of the bag, per se.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Any additional questions? Uh, Ms. Finney?
Is there a possibility that the building gets a single-use tenant, such as a total sit-down restaurant?
Not at this time. That is not what, that's not what we're proposing, and we have calculated our parking requirements based on 3,000 being the medical use and 2,000 being a restaurant use. So.
And Mr. Finney, that, if they, if they did that, they would have to come back to us to change that plan.
If it changed their parking requirements or anything.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions? Uh, Mr. Douglas?
Maybe, maybe somebody from the applicant's side can answer it. In 2013, when it was estimated your parking spaces for the whole development, was that taken in account of the new entrance that you're going to have coming in off of Parker Drive for the total development?
I, I, I did not own the building in 2013, so, but from looking at the plan, I believe that it did. Jim might be able to answer that question better than I can, but, but none of us here were involved in the project at that time.
Okay, so you're not going to be able to.
They're still at applicant, so let's wait, but that's what Amy is still working on.
But I think what we can say is that the number of parking spaces in 2013 are the exact same as the number of parking spaces that we've, we have not re, we've not eliminated any parking spaces, even though the size of the building has increased by 1,200 square feet.
Okay, do you, I understand that, but you're taking, you're, somehow or another, we're looking at a site developmental plan of a 2013 that shows a retail shopping center of this location, which had multiple retail spots for each one. So that's how they staff decided how much square footage and not based on the occupants or the level of occupants in that area. But my other question to you was that, based on the entrance of, off of Parker Drive, the screen dumpster that was mentioned, six-foot fence, do you see any impediment of that having any drawback for visual? I don't know how far off that sets off of Parker Drive, and, I mean, would there be any sightline interference for people turning or coming out of that area?
As the engineer, we, we haven't addressed all of those issues. It would appear at this time that there's not going to be any problems with the site clearance, just, just by looking at it up there.
Thank you.
And just to add, that is something I, I, as the owner, would want to landscape, and I would not want just a wooden fence there to be at the front.
Right, I was more concerned about the sideline as far as clearance, as far as pulling out of Parker Drive, out of the parking lots, and then trying to get onto 53, you know, because you're going to have cars coming in off, off of 53 into there. So pulling out, just was concerned about, is there going to be enough distance there for a six-foot high fence? I don't know how far back it sets off of it, because there's no.
The proposed, the proposed dumpster is right back here.
Correct.
And so the sightline for that car, oop, is going to be out in this area, so they should have a clear view of any traffic coming in towards them. They'll be required to stop right at this point, so.
I'm also talking about when they coming out of the parking lot, onto Parker Drive. I mean, from the drawing, it looks like there's plenty of sightline. I mean.
I would agree.
But when it's developed, then the next minute, we're like, well, there's only five feet from the curb to, to Parker Drive. So are these to drawing, or are these to measurements?
Yes, and there appears to be plenty of.
At least 20, 25 feet there, or more.
It looks like it's in that area, but I would have to put a scale on it to see.
That's fair, thanks.
All right, is that all, Mr. Douglas? Okay, Dr. Arvin?
My question is, I heard earlier that there's improvements on Highway 53 in the long-term view, but it's, as today, what we're considering does not consider any improvements to Highway 53. Parker Drive, I guess simply stated, my question is, is there some discussion for future traffic signal, Parker Drive and 53? I'm operating as a commissioner thinking that's not, not in the plan we're looking at today, we're all in the parking lot, not any improvements to 53.
That's correct. I think 53 is just informational. This development doesn't have an impact necessarily on improvements on 53. The, the issue of traffic signals on 53, I once heard, and I believe it to be true, that we already have more traffic signals on Kentucky 53 than there are on Dixie Highway with less traffic. So we can't just go stick a traffic signal at Parker Drive, because there's one at Yeager Avenue, and there's one at Crystal Drive. But this whole access management project is intended to help with turning movements, so there'll be turn lanes and all that. Will there be a traffic signal? I'm not sure. But again, because we have so many, we, we can't have that many traffic lights, or you never get through LaGrange.
So a left turn out of Parker Drive on the 53 is going to be problematic.
It is today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else, Dr. Arvin? Okay, any additional questions?
I, I.
Oh, Mr. Irvin, sorry.
Todd, if I can have you, you mentioned earlier that there's a cross-parking agreement so that somebody could park actually at AutoZone and walk. Is that with all tenants? So everybody in, in the shopping center, including these outlots, agree that a person can park in one of these places and go to any of the tenants, as long as there's available parking?
Well, there is a, there is a cross-parking agreement between AutoZone and the, the rest of the property, which is with, just owned by Oldham Plaza LLC. But it, there is no assigned parking anywhere for any tenant. So yes, someone can park in front of Planet Fitness and walk over to Dollar, or Dollar Tree or Rite Aid, and they're perfectly content and allowed to do that.
Okay. And are you aware, do you know whether the church hires off-duty police officers during their time when they have services to direct traffic out on the 53?
I've not been there on Sunday morning and seen it with my own eyes, but they have told me that they do have multiple traffic officers.
Okay, and are, are, do you know whether they have additional parking off-site somewhere and use shuttle buses?
Yes, they do. And my understanding is they're working on additional arrangements there as well. So we have not received any complaints on parking from neighbors or from any other tenants. That doesn't mean there's not issues there, but we have not, they have not come to us, so we've not received them.
Okay, and, and just so, since you're standing up there, because I sort of testified earlier that I had talked to you about, you're still interested and willing to try to find a park-and-tark location, if that's possible, without interrupting parking for your tenants?
That's correct. And I think we have a spot on-site that we could do that with.
Thank you.
Okay, is that all, sir? Okay, all right, any additional questions from commissioners? All right, Ms. Alvey, do you have those numbers put together?
Okay, the 2013 plan, which was 3,800 square feet for a restaurant, they were required minimum to have 31 parking spaces. In 2017, using the 2,000 square feet for the restaurant and 3,000 square feet for medical, they're also required to have 31. So they meet the requirements of both minimum parking required on the 2013 plan and the 2017 plan. Was that your question? Or did you want to compare what this, the number of parking spaces that were shown for, we'll call it Outlot 2, in 2013, including the ones that go along this backside? There was 52, what we'll call Outlot Number 2. On the 2017 plan, there's 45. So there's a difference of seven parking spaces. But again, they both are above the minimum requirement of 31 for that outlot. Does that help?
It helps. It's just that I wasn't around 2013, and I think the planning commissioners all understand, and I understand, that developmental plans change over years, and that when this developmental plan came in in 2013, it was proposing, you know, a cinema and multiple retail spaces, and not, not where, those retail spaces now have become larger entities of businesses or occupants. And those square footage of that building, or those buildings, were based on somewhat of the parking spaces of the needs of those businesses. I mean, it was subdivided by retail, like for instance, 49,400 square, 460 square feet was minimum 198 spaces. The restaurant, which is an existing restaurant there, almost 6,000 square foot, 48 spaces. And the cinema was at 377 spaces.
I was going to compare the, the cinema parking requirements to the church, but I don't know what the seating is at the church, to compare what the, what those two were different.
I, I just, that's my only concern, is that it seems like, you know, and I'm, I don't want to sit here and preach to the choir, and I don't want, you know, to testify. It's just seemed like that when we are looking at just one change of a revised developmental plan, we don't take into consideration the effect it has on the other development that's sitting there. But I know that we're just concentrating on this particular developmental plan, so I have nothing else to add.
And it meets the minimum parking requirement of the 31.
All right, any additional questions before we move on? All right, seeing none, we'll now move into the final statement of the applicant.
I don't know if it would help at all, but we do have the parking breakdown. As she stated it, 31 parking spaces are required for our site, and we're providing 37. We're going to have some green space out there that's in addition to what's there now, and we're going to be able to take out that entrance and make that a little bit safer travels for everybody in that intersection. And I think this is a very good addition for that site. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, is there anything that you'd like to add? Is there, is the attorney?
Not really. I would just say that the proposed change is going to accommodate probably a tenant that is not going to conflict with the heavy use of the one tenant you're concerned about, Mr. Douglas, so we did take that into consideration.
So I would assume, I'll stay up here just a second, I assume that this would complete your application then?
This will complete our application, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, this docket, PZ 17023, is complete, completed. And as always, I'll call on Mr. Irvin to outline what's being requested on this proposed revised development plan.
The only decision you're being asked to consider today is approval or denial of a revised development plan. If, and you, again, as always, you have proposed motions that will give you some guidance on either one of those. If you choose to approve the site development plan, there are binding elements or conditions of approval, I think is what we called them on, in the past on this one. There are three that I can, or four, actually. There should be no changes to the site development plan without approval by the Oldham County Planning Commission. A detailed landscape plan and building renderings will be required for review by staff to confirm conformance with the Highway 53 corridor overlay district revitalization standards. Any signage must be in compliance with Section 290 and only permitted upon submittal and approval of a signed permit application. And then the development, number four is development must comply with all state and local requirements and ordinances in place at the time of approval.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Irvin. You've heard the, what's being requested here on this revised development plan on docket PZ 17023. Chair would now entertain a motion on this. Yes, sir, Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised plan, docket number PZ 17-023, and that it complies with Objective LU 3-1, that has to do with supporting existing businesses and growth in compatible land uses. Objective LU 3-2, having to do with new commercial development in existing centers and being compatible with the adjacent development. In addition to that, it complies with Goal BI 1, having to do with future land use and commercially, and there are one, two, and three parts of that, item one, two, and three, and it complies with all three of those.
Okay.
And along with the four suggested conditions of approval.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Carter, is that adequate?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor to approve the revised development plan on docket PZ 17023? Do we have a second? Got Mr. Finney's seconds. And now, any discussion on this revised development plan on .90 acres? Ms. Smith?
Could I have a definitive answer on, Mr. Irvin said, he told Sue Fuller from the City of LaGrange that they were going to try to find a spot for park-and-tark on, down further on Commerce Parkway to the west. Mr. Clark said that he was trying to find a place at his development. Are both of those an option, or is there one that's more viable than the other?
Mr. Arvin?
At this point, they're both options. And again, the first agency that has, in my opinion, kind of say-so, if you will, is Tark, you know, and how they route a bus through a particular area. They don't actually pull into this site, they stay on public roads, so that's one condition. It depends on how many spaces might be available. As Mr. Clark's, we, we talked with him about where those might be that won't interfere with business operations. So there's the potential that this bus stop could stay there and at least be a place where people could gather if they're brought by the circulator bus. We are talking about an additional space in another location on Commerce Parkway to accommodate, and whether or not that works for Tark. And that would be a potential second LaGrange site for park-and-tark. But again, I, it all depends on number of spaces available, ridership, whether Tark can make the proper turning movements to allow for boarding and disembarkment from, you know.
And I do not know how many people ride the Tark bus into town, park there, as compared to how many ride the circulator bus to get on the Tark, to go to town, but I'm sure it's more people park there, but I just wanted to, I'd hate for that to go away.
Oh, I would, too.
Because it is a service to the city, and it needs to be maintained.
Actually, I'm thankful that Mr. Clark has been allowing people to park there. There's no lease on that particular piece of property for Park and Tark, it's just, go ahead and park there.
Right, because I tried to find the lease agreement, and I couldn't find one.
There's no payment to the property owner for Park and Tark, and so all of these are voluntary, and I appreciate that he's willing to continue to work with us to try to accommodate.
I do, too, and I hope, I hope he can find it, to keep it. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion on the motion to approve the revised development plan? If no hands go up, we'll, I'll ask Ms. Fox to vote, take the vote, on the docket PZ 17023, the revised development plan on .90 acres.
Mr. Klingenfuss?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Urban?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Ms. Finney?
Yes.
Ms. Hampton?
No.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
All righty, the motion to approve the revised development plan, excuse me, has been approved on a vote of 11 to 1. Thank you all, and commissioners, I'll call Ms. Alvey up to kind of let us know what we've got on the plate for next month.
You will have at least three doctored items for next month. We have three applicants that we are certain will file by tomorrow, so as soon as we have an agenda set, as always, I will send that out to everyone.
Okay, any questions from commissioners before we adjourn? Got you out here pretty early this morning, so...
And we do have SRC.
Yeah, and we do have a study review committee, it's Thursday at 5:00 PM. Anyone, it's an open meeting, so anyone that would like to come and participate in the discussions?
Okay, all right, yes, sir. Mr. Horton?
Mr. Chairman, can we still...
It's your mic on, sir.
Thank you. Do we still send out either an agenda or a summary or something to all commissioners about what is happening in the SRC, either regularly or intermittently?
I usually send it to the members of study review committee, I don't send it to the entire planning commission. The agenda and, well, the agenda goes out to all, but the meeting summaries and stuff is usually just the voting members, because that's kind of like minutes of the meeting, so...
I remember one time, sometime back, that we had talked about that, and everybody thought it was a good idea, and then I think we did it once or twice, and then it sort of disappeared. I don't know if that would be a good thing to look at it again, or whether the commission is, if they got, I don't know if there's a time problem in there about getting the minutes or getting whatever, but...
But we approve, you know, the, you know, from last month, you know, we'll approve those tomorrow night, or Thursday night, and so...
Just something to think about, maybe, as chair...
We can send them out after they're approved, in case there's changes, like we don't send out planning commission minutes to anyone until they have been approved, because that's when it becomes a public document at that point. It's draft form prior to that.
From my position, I don't, you know, I don't think it'd make any difference whether they're approved or not approved, for the commission, to get them and at least see what the SRC is doing. What I'm thinking is, is that when some of these issues come before the commission to vote on, it may be just all brand-new, if they're not keeping up with what's happening, and it's pretty hard to do, and whereas if everybody gets some sort of something regularly when it comes time for a commission, everybody should be on board, understanding what that's all about.
You know, we would probably need to do that as they were, once they were approved, it might, you know, we'd be a month behind, but, you know, that's what, because then they'd be out in the public, you know, and it wouldn't be, they wouldn't have not been approved, and so, you know, I could see a situation where we could get in to some issues with, you know, okay, you sent them out, and then we meet and change something or whatever, and then the document that's out there is not correct, so...
Yeah, I see, so keep it, keep it clean all the way through.
We can discuss that Thursday night and...
All right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, anything else for the good of the cause? All right, if not, we will stand adjourned at almost 11 o'clock here. Thank you all. Yes, sir?